Okay, friends, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'm going to call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 7:02 PM. Members present are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Dylan, Girbaugh, Rhodes, Tahar, and CEO. We did receive communication earlier today that Councilwoman McClellan may be running a little bit late. From city staff, we have City Manager Campell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Parks and Rec. Director Scruggs is out in the hall. We're also joined by Administrative Assistant Justine Myra, the rest of, and DPW Director Fordice. For anyone else who comes in, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Moved as submitted, Councilmember CEO?
Please.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dylan. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ice, huff, and motion carries unanimously. We have two discussion items this evening. The first is health insurance proposal, and I don't have any initial comments, so I'm going to turn it over to our City Manager.
And again, these records, a memo we got from Dave Hunziger dated October the 24th, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as Mayor Marl alluded, Dave Hunziger is here from Kaepernick Insurance, as is Justine Myra, for one more time. So, this is the, that time of year is we come before council to discuss the annual health insurance renewals that go into effect January 1st. So, you may recall that a few years ago, through collective bargaining we put together, established, we established a healthcare committee, health insurance committee, made up of the bargain units as well as management to talk about and understand the renewals, and then it serves as an educational component. You know, we have Act 152. My beard got trimmed, so I can't do that. So, anyway, but it's an educational tool to help employees understand what is being proposed and what the changes may or may not be, and those types of things. And, again, to incorporate that along with Act 152, that sets limits on how much the public employer can pay towards public employees' health insurance at any given year. So, the Act 152 says 80/20 is one option, where the employer can pay a maximum of 80% towards those costs. And then there's also the hard cap, which is regulated, determined every year by Department Treasury in the annual CPI for medical costs. So, I won't steal any of David's thunder, but, so, we've worked with Kaepernick for several years, decades, for health insurance, so, and continue to be pleased with those efforts. But, in any case, unless there's any questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Dave, and he'll walk you through what the committee has recommended, and we'll do our best to answer any questions that there may be.
Are there any questions off the bat?
Just real quick, are we going live? Can that be resolved?
I believe it is. Chase, are we good? Are we live? We're not live. Well, as of this morning, whoa. That's not working either. So, as of this morning, I was informed it was working. And so, my apologies, and we'll continue, and we're not, I know we have been working on it, when I say "we," Chris, from our side, and the schools from their side, to make the two communicate. So, I'm not sure what's going on, but we will certainly continue to get it resolved.
Dave, please. Thank you for being with us.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me today. So, I think you all have in your work packet the memo that I put together, and probably looks similar to the memo that we've seen in previous years, as far as updating some numbers and whatnot. I think that this year was not a good year. I don't think there's any secret to that, when you talk about an increase of over 15%. The main contributor to that is Blue Cross. Blue Care Network has spent a fair amount of money and time, I think, the last couple of years, looking at other Blue Cross associations across the country, to evaluate whether they think they're doing it properly or not, and they came to the conclusion that they weren't, and essentially have borrowed, stolen, whatever you want to say. I think it's Blue Cross of Pennsylvania's underwriting pattern. And, really, the main impacts to us are really twofold. The first is that we were receiving, essentially, a credibility credit for good claims experience over the last, really, forever. I know that I've sat in this room before and said, "It's all about claims, it's all about claims." Well, this year, I'm saying it's not as much about claims. And that new underwriting model hurt us, because we were receiving a pretty good discount for our claims experience over the years, and is a main contributor to this. One of the other things it did is it reevaluated our Blue Care Network, and Blue Care Network, if you recall, is the HMO that Blue Cross, Blue Shield offers. It has not been a viable option in, really, previous years, because of the memberships that we had there, was really our retirees, or some of our retirees, and I'm not sure there was a single active person. If there was, it was an older person. And those rates were terrible. And, so, by combining this new underwriting model, it actually becomes a viable option. It's something we talked about with the Healthcare Committee, and I think the, I'm not sure if I'd say overwhelming, but the general response was, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of interest from the employees in the HMO. And then, when you combine that with the idea of PA 152, capping the city's responsibility relating to the medical and prescription, the employees really appear to me to be willing to absorb the higher, or the above and beyond that PA 152 caps your exposure at this year. The employees were willing to absorb that in their paychecks. Again, 15.27%. If we look down at the bottom, or sort of most of the way down, you can see the PA 152 increase is 3.3%, giving you the actual breakdown by single, two-person, or family. You don't really see it here, but it, there continues to be a bit of a, what I'll call a tax on two-person contracts, meaning, when you look at the breakdown in the subsequent spreadsheets I provided, two persons generally have the highest out-of-pocket premium cost. It was addressed a few years ago, but not to the extent that it really should have been, and so it continues to be a problem. You can see that the increases for single, 202, from 16 to 17, 423 for two-person, and then 553 for families. If you flip to the second page, I did my best to break down what the actual costs are to the city. So, overall, the total increase, when looking at the medical, dental, and vision, we're talking about $120,000. If we look at the actives specifically, and then put the caps in, my estimation is that it would be $18,000, a little bit more than that, for an increase to the city responsibility. The retirees is the significant part of our exposure. My estimates are just under $51,000. When you looked at the dental and vision, because remember, dental and vision is not part of PA 152, that's just over $1,000. So, overall, looking at everything, I'm estimating an increase of just over $70,000 for the year. Any questions there?
Yeah, actually, I don't know. When you regard the $50,700 for retiree medical, you have to look at, if we didn't move the option currently, using the HMO.
Well, you have, you have a lot of people, so we have a number of retirees that are on the HMO side of it, but we have a number of retirees that are still in Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Michigan suffixes. So, you know, I think those increases on the HMO have been, just like the PPO, I mean, they've been up some years, down some years. But, it would, I mean, I think it would definitely be a cost savings if we transitioned people from the PPO side of things to the HMO side of things for that.
So, does the city make a decision to do that, do that, is it going to be a saving?
Yeah.
Can I ask you a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
In the other municipalities that you've worked with, have jurisdictions moved in that direction, and what sort of response have they received?
Well, change is a four-letter word.
Right.
Okay? And nobody likes messing with retiree benefits. I think that in the situations where retirees, it was discussed and explained, the situation and what needed to happen, I think that there was, there was a receptive conversation there. Have I, have I been involved where a municipality has actually gone through and made significant changes? No. No. Most of them continue to push it down the line.
Jack, Mr. CEO.
$70,000 of cost. Will the increase, or is that the total?
That would be the total, my estimation of the total additional cost that the city would be incurring this year. The next sheets I have are these, this package of spreadsheets. These are my PA 152 evaluations, and just as a reminder, the way these are set up is, basically, we have several suffixes, but this is really just your actives, because they're the ones that are subject to PA 152. And then, what we do is, if you're looking at the first one, it should say in the upper-right corner, Simply Blue 500, 1,080%. So, this is a plan that was designed, essentially, to try and keep a plan that was not considered a high deductible health plan, but was considered more to try and come close to the PA 152 maximums with regards to premiums. As you can see, that it would cost a little bit of money, if we looked at the hard cap in the sort of middle column, far right, about $1493 pre-tax impact to the employee's paycheck, 88, 85, and then 91, 36. We did look at other options, but again, I think the response from the committee was, we like the plan we have, and this is what our preference would be, and they'd be willing to incur the additional cost. The spreadsheets behind it, really get into the high deductible health plans, the HSA. The first one you're looking at, or should say, it should say Simply Blue 3,000, 6,000, 100% Divisions 2 and Division 0. This particular spreadsheet, this particular spreadsheet, when you're looking at it, you should see in the annual, 2017 Annual HSA Contribution, 3,000 and 6,000. So, as you recall, employees have a choice to look at, or take a strategy where they get the full deductible covered, but then they have to pay out of their paycheck, or the next spreadsheet, essentially, is the same thing, but it basically gives the employees an option to not have anything come out of their paycheck, but take a lower HSA contribution. So, there's really no difference between the second spreadsheet and the third, besides the HSA contribution. Okay? Same thing that we've done the previous few years. Beyond that, if we keep flipping, you'll see a Simply Blue 3,000, 6,000, 80%, and this is for our divisions of 12, 11, and 13. So, this is our plan we added a few years ago, from moving us from 100% plan after deductible to 80%, lower-cost plan, higher contribution to the HSA. And again, the people in this suffix, nobody pays anything in premiums, but they do get the, they don't get their full HSA, or don't get the full deductible paid for. The last one is our HMO option, as it extends today. We don't have anybody in it, primarily because the premiums were much higher in previous years. They've come down and are reason, a lot more reasonable this year, but still would result in a fair amount of money coming out of the employee's paycheck. So, any questions with these?
Keep going.
Yep. The next spreadsheet you have in front of you basically has three plan designs on it. These three plans were basically the result of our committee, Healthcare Committee, evaluating, really, a number of plans, but when it was all said and done, these were the ones that they asked, basically, council to consider for recommendation, recommendation approval. And they're the same three plans we have right now. I do want to take a step back, and as part of the conversation, we discussed other carriers, and so I had conversations with Health Alliance Plan and Priority Health, really, sort of the two main other options in our area, and both declined to quote, and basically, it's the same story we've had for a number of years, in that there's underwriting guidelines that they set forth in various areas, and in the particular area where we have trouble with is the number of retirees we have to actives. And, you know, roughly 15 or 10% is their target, and we're closer to like 20 and 30%. So, both declined to quote, so those were not options. Again, we looked at options within Blue Cross, not only on the PPO, but the HMO, really had a lot of conversations with, about the HMO, and then ultimately, I think that the overwhelming response through committee was to recommend the same plans we have now, and again, have the employees absorb above and beyond the PA 152 cap. Questions?
And you can keep going if you can.
Okay. This one? Okay. The next spreadsheet is a sheet that we did a little while ago, relating to the Medicare Advantage versus our, some of our current Blue Cross contracts. So, right now, we have retirees sort of broken up into, what I'll say, two main areas. We have a number currently on a Blue Care Network Medicare Advantage Plan, and this was added a long time ago. It was back when my dad was involved. And then, we have a demographic that is, continues to be with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, not in a Medicare Advantage situation. And what we've done is, we evaluated, just looking at, not every single person could be transferred, because there's a couple concerns or questions we're still working out, but looking at five people, and the people we excluded were retirees, where there was somebody in the family, either a spouse or a child, where they, we didn't believe they had Medicare. And so, we can't just dump them in this Medicare product, because they're not allowed to be in it. So, really, this evaluation is looking at five contracts, but we're looking at possibly adding a couple additional, if we can work some details out with Blue Cross and Blue Care Network. My estimation, based on, you know, this comparison for what our rates would be for these five people, versus maybe being moved over to a Medicare Advantage, is a savings of roughly $35,000. So, I think that answers your question from before. Would there be a lot of savings? Yes, there would be a lot of savings. Would there be a cost to that? Maybe, with regards to working with retirees who may not want to be moved over in this situation, and I'm glad I don't make that decision. One of the issues that we have to be aware of is that, remember, the Medicare Advantage Plan that's set up today does not really accommodate people out of state. So, it's an HMO product. It works very well here, but if we have retirees, say, in Kentucky or Texas, it's not going to be a good fit. Now, is there a product that could work for them? Yes, Blue Cross has a PPO product that could potentially be helpful, but we would have to continue that evaluation.
How many retirees do we have out of state? Is that just one? Two? Okay.
And they're in Texas and Kentucky?
Yeah, okay. I knew one was Kentucky.
I had inside information on that one, so. Okay. I know, I think you have some of the other spreadsheets in there. Sorry, are there any questions in this particular area?
Questions?
No, I appreciate this. I wanted to see.
Yeah, apologies. We meant, it didn't really get left out of the packet, but that was planned, because then that was one of the things that you all had asked during the budget discussions this past spring.
And just so you know, and I'm not even sure Todd or Justine know this, but always a surprise, everybody's eyes get big when I say that. The Hartford came out with a product a couple of years ago, where it's intended to sort of lop off your Medicare Advantage employees or your retirees. And why we would consider doing that is because if we could pull them out, then all of a sudden, we meet underwriting guidelines to look at other carriers, and things could get interesting. However, after doing the evaluation, they were not willing to cover a few people, based on some disabilities. Like, we have one contract in particular, has a disability, a younger, I say younger, but a non-Medicare age person, as well as, the final rates came back actually a lot higher than what we're doing right now in the Medicare Advantage program, and our retirees otherwise. So, it made no sense, ultimately. So, I've just, I didn't include it in any evaluations, so.
Off the top of your head, I mean, would, how many retirees would they not include, or who they red flagged?
I think it was two, two, and I think the one that was the hardest for us to address was the, is the one retiree contract that his employee's spouse and a dependent child. Unless there's any questions, I'll keep going.
I have just one, one little question. Can we buy those people off? Can we just, just pay them out of the plan?
So, I'm not an attorney, but I would say absolutely, why not? I would tell you that I worked with a township located right around here, and they did that. They bought out their retirees, and I think their retirees get a, basically, a monthly stipend to find their own insurance. When these retiree, a lot of these retirees went on, when a lot of these contracts were initially bargained for, there really were no good options for retirees, especially in the gap year. And what I mean by the gap year, gap years, is from retirement to age 65, where Medicare became, where was the access? And there was not great access. Well, we have the Affordable Care Act now, and whether you're for it or against it, I think what it has done is created options for individuals to find insurance. So, is there a need for this? I think the need is less than it has been, but ultimately, you're still working with a number of people, or you've made promises to a number of people that are expecting it to continue.
Please continue.
Scaring me there for a second. Okay. All right. Pretty much, that brings me to the end of what I was planning on discussing. Is there anything that has been missed, or would like to be discussed further?
Let me, before I open it up for questions, Justine, any comments? Anything you'd like to say? No? Todd, you're good. Treasurer Bennett, you're good? Okay. Well, then, let's start with questions. We'll work our way around the table, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mayor Potem, but can we start with you, and please make sure you have the microphone, and then we'll transition to Mr. Tahar and Mr. CEO, and work our way around to the opposite side of the table.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder about the microphone. This is a process that I've gone through a number of times, and, well, I'm never happy with the increase in premium. It appears that it's been well researched, and I don't know that we have any choice but to go with what's here.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Mr. Tahar, questions or comments?
Yes. Likewise. And also, I just would also like to say, appreciate the information about the retiree medical insurance costs and other possibilities. I think it's valuable information that we need to keep in mind as we look through.
I've read through this several times since we received it over the weekend, and something about healthcare makes me want to jump up out of my chair and scream. But, again, like the two people that spoke before me, I don't know what else we can do. We've made promises, we've incurred legacy costs, and being a retiree myself, I know that my future is structured around those kinds of promises. So, I don't think we can renege on the promises at all. I just wish there was some way to somehow get a stranglehold on these rising insurance costs, but it appears that it's not in the cards.
So, I would say the last two years have been actually pretty good for us. Sorry, last, two of the last three years. Last year, we were about a 7% increase. The year before, we actually had about a 7% decrease, and then the year before that, you know, it was really close to no change. I really think that this 15% we're talking this year is really like a one-time adjustment for the, you laugh, right, a one-time adjustment for, to move to the new underwriting model. That doesn't mean that we're not going to get a 15% next year, or worse, but it also doesn't mean we're not going to go back to maybe some of the six, I use the term loosely, successes we've had in the past, of some lower ones. You know, time will be the tell, and I agree, I mean, I'm not sure what other options, if there were, I'd be talking about them. So, you know, the, there's always, there's always, I mean, there's always things to consider, and the things we considered this year are, you know, can we reduce the plan? Is the staff interested in that? And the staff really didn't seem interested in that. And again, they were willing to pick up the additional cost, for the most part, so.
I appreciate your diligence.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Dylan, you want to make sure you have a microphone there, ma'am?
So, is the 15% sort of an across-the-board, or is that a Blue Cross thing?
That's a City of Celine thing. So, if I took our city, and I gave us bad claims experience the last probably 10 or 15 years, and then this underwriting model changed, I'd actually probably be giving you good news, that, hey, our credibility factor that we've been getting hit on the last forever went away, and we have a very good renewal this year. So, each renewal, especially in this sort of experience-rated model, is specific to Celine.
And then, I guess my other question would probably be on the city's side, which is, what exactly is our obligation to the retirees? What is the expectation for them?
Sure. What, a number of them are kind of governed, if you will, by what they retired, what the labor contract said when they retired. So, again, the, and a number of years ago, we had a discussion, a city council, about potential modifying that, and again, at that time, the courts were kind of a mixed bag, but more times than not, generally speaking, at least the information that we were given was that, as long as it was more of a lateral move, as opposed to reduction in benefits, typically, the courts were okay with that. And when I say that, meaning that the retirees from places that have lost their benefits have, you know, filed a suit against their former employer, and, but, so that's simply, we're essentially tied by the agreement that they, or the policy that the retired under.
Have we ever explored the buyout, haven't you?
We have not. Not that I recall, I'm pretty sure we have not.
I would just like to see what the numbers would be like for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dylan. Mr. McClellan?
Hi. I apologize for coming in late. Looking over this, I concur with Mr. CEO and the rest of my colleagues on the other side of the table there. I feel like it's a bigger-picture issue, that healthcare costs are just going up across the board. I know I talked to a few people that are private, are self-employed, that are facing the same issues, and it's just, is what it is, unfortunately, so.
Girbaugh?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. When we're talking about the HMO, what would be the difference in the type of benefits and so forth that the individual would receive, not including the ones that are out of state? Is there a distinction between those that's significant? Is there a distinction between those that's significant?
So, PPO versus an HMO, first off, is just a, it's a different model of delivering insurance. So, the HMO model, you have a primary care physician, you need to direct your care through that primary care physician. There's a different network of providers, probably not as significant as the PPO. And it really doesn't lend itself to other states, meaning you really have to be living here in Michigan in a county that has the appropriate filings for it to be even a viable option. Versus a PPO, which, in a PPO model, generally a bigger network, no primary care physician, in-network and out-of-network benefits available. And usually, there is a reciprocity from state to state, meaning if I move to Texas or Kentucky, I could access that state's PPO and be treated as if I'm right here living in Celine. So, completely different models. The HMO, more restrictive versus the PPO. But I think some people would argue that oftentimes, HMOs have actually higher level of benefits available. Oftentimes, lower copays for various things, whether you're considering prescriptions or office visits versus the PPO. So, there's some give and take.
And it still allows you to go to either St. Joe or U of M here in our county?
My understanding is yes, that both hospitals are participating currently with our arrangement and/or our Medicare Advantage.
Understanding this because I have my own brother that's underneath, probably going to have to move this plan because what he currently has is going to triple. And being 96, and as a result of this, I need to understand this, but I also need to understand that there's a lot of people outside of the city that are facing this type of hit. And so, we're having to look at a balanced approach and not knowing that we can raise taxes and double whammy them to cover this is a concern. My other concern, and I've brought this up before, is when, three years ago, we knew we had that negative decrease that we passed on savings to the employees, significantly impacts at this point in time. We've now passed on approximately 30%, 30% to the city that could have been maintained at about 22% had we not done that. Just a reminder again, that we talk about, you know, the benefits and so forth, but there is a control and a balance between these that we have to maintain. And again, this does not include the life insurance for our retirees that went up significantly, which is another big impact and hit to the city. And that's the reason why I've been looking at these other aspects of the HMO or so forth, because if we can still provide the same type of care, an aspect that we think, we believe we may be able to do, it not only benefits us as a city, but it doesn't put the burden of cost on our employees because we're going to have to start looking at reductions in annual increases and other activities that potentially will impact current operating employees. I know there's a commitment to retirees, but I think we were able to balance that out by looking at all advantages. My only other question was on here that indicated that the Healthcare Committee considered other medical options within Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and PCN, but decided to stick with the current offerings. Do we see where the other options are here, where?
They're not in the packet.
So, we don't have full information?
Agreed.
If I may, interject as part of the debate. First, kudos to Kaepernick for pulling together. We looked at over nine different alternatives. This is the most expensive one that would impact the employees. The other ones, the cost for the employee would, could have been lower, but it was a huge change in the benefits. So, this is, this is, the employees decided to carry on with what we had at a higher rate to the employee because the employee is picking up everything except the cost of living amount. So, out of that 15%, what's the cost of living this year? So, the rest of that, the employee is picking up. And the group looked at several options. We met three or four times and had Dave explain all of the benefits for each one of those options. And these are the ones that will have the highest impact to the employee. So, it wasn't that they chose us because this was the cheaper one. They chose us because this was the plan that covered most of the cost that we, as the employees, and, you know, were going to incur and have that. So, I just wanted to thank Dave and his team for pulling together all those numbers, and then we all just said, oh, it's all good what we have.
If I may, excuse me. We're certainly happy to share that. We can send that, send those out.
I'll put it in the next council panel.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I think just for our help, to also understand how the deductibles and everything, because there's policies here that are different than I've seen in other operations, and just trying to understand it, just so that we understand how it impacts in different ways. Because again, my concern is, although you feel this is a one-year hit, I don't think it is. I think this is going to be another trend. We don't know what's going to happen, depending on what happens with the election and how this could play out. So, whatever significantly starts hitting us, I know it's going to start shifting more and more costs onto the employees. But I just want to see a balance between retirees and our working staff. But I don't want to take away from the benefits that our retirees have, that they were counting on. But I do believe there is a balance there.
Thank you, Mr. Gearba. Well, let me conclude by saying this. First of all, as it relates to our active employees, I mean, for lack of a better way to articulate it, it is what it is. And I agree with the sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues, and I'm happy to endorse and support the recommendation that's made by our underwriter as well as the Health Committee. And I want to thank you, Dave, for your work, and Justine, and everyone else who was involved in this. As it relates to our retirees, I think that both Councilmember Gearba and Councilwoman Dillon touched on something that I would like to explore further. I don't like to think of it as a buyout, but I would like to see some numbers relating to providing our retirees some sort of stipend or voucher, as you put it, similar to what some adjacent or neighboring municipalities do. I would also concur with Mr. Gearba that I think exploring the transition to an HMO is of value. And Mr. Campo was eloquent when he said a lateral change, and it really is, for the most part, a lateral change, but could produce some cost savings. And I have to tell you that I'm kind of troubled as it relates to our retiree healthcare because of some of the things that you articulated, Dave, or, excuse me, Dave, I'm going back in time. We can't even get, we can't even get quotes from HAP or Priority Health. And so, I think that, I think that as it relates to retiree healthcare, I think that our, if we stay on our current trajectory, I'm not sure it's sustainable. And so, I would concur that we should look at these issues further in the coming months because I think it's something we are going to have to deal with sooner as opposed to later. So. I know, Ms., let me stick on that, let me stay on that point for just a minute. Ms. Dillon, obviously, you're in favor of looking at this again, specifically, I hate to use the word buyout, but.
Yes.
Okay. As well as maybe looking more at transitioning from what we currently offer to an HMO?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gearba, you be amenable to that?
Yeah, I'm more in favor of the HMO, PPO approach because that way, we know we're still providing the insurance.
Okay.
Concerned that going to a voucher process, if I may jeopardize our retiree's insurance and then apply all those.
Well, and let me preface, I'm not, I agree with that, and I'm not unbiased on that issue, but I think that Councilwoman Dillon's point has some merit. I would like to run some more numbers and get a little bit more data on that, on that particular issue. Ms. McLoughlin?
Do we know how many retirees are still within the networks for Michigan? So, if you switch to an HMO, that there wouldn't be that much impact?
So.
Because that's, from my understanding, that a PPO is easier to transition countrywide versus an HMO, which is, tends to be more local, is that correct? Do we know how many?
So, it's all but two, correct?
All but two of your retirees, to my knowledge, are living in Michigan. So, I think that that would, I think that's the starting number. Now, we'd have to dig a little bit deeper and just assure that, that each county, because you actually have to look at it from a county standpoint to make sure that that county actually has an eligible Medicare Advantage. And why that would be a little bit different from one county to the next is that they, if they don't have a certain number of providers, then that county is not considered to be a viable county, and you really shouldn't have anybody in there.
Okay. Are you in favor, though, of bringing this issue back specifically related to the benefits we provide to our retirees?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Seal, you had a question and comment, sir? And then if you could also address my question, then I'll move to Councilwoman Tahar and Mayor Potem Rhodes.
My comment is on point to your question. Excuse me. I guess I'd ask you, Mr. Hensler, a question. If somebody leaves the state for two or three months in the wintertime, and they belong to an HMO, does that also jeopardize their healthcare during the time they're gone?
No. So, the HMO product does have tools built in to address traveling, such as snowbirds. The idea is that if somebody were to travel to Florida, for example, they could access benefits through a program called the Blue Card Program. And that's where they would call customer service, they would get access to a provider, typically participating with Blue Cross's PPO product in that state. The issue is that you don't really get a chance to establish a provider, meaning each time you call in, you could be directed to a different doctor. And again, it's, and if there's something that's ongoing where you need monitoring, say, if somebody had a cardiac condition and had to be going to get lab work on a regular basis or seeing the doctor on a regular basis, the intention is that you need to come back to Michigan for that.
Right. The other comment that I have is, having retired twice myself already, is that one of the real benefits of retirement is a sense of freedom it brings the individual. And freedom not only to do what you want, and do what you want with your time, and get out of bed when you want, and so on and so on, but freedom perhaps to relocate. Freedom to perhaps relocate to some other place. And if we curtail that through the HMO, I think that's a consideration we need to take seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Mr. Har?
Yes. I'm in favor of gathering more information and finding out more about possibilities. I guess one of the questions I would have about this is, can we offer retirees options? HMO versus PPO versus the voucher program or whatever we want to call it? And if people stay within either the HMO or the PPO, is it possible to move from one to the other during an enrollment period every year? So, for example, if someone is moving around the country or spending a lot of time away and is in a PPO, but then comes back to Michigan, can they transition to an HMO? So, that would be one of the things I'd be interested in hearing more about.
You might be able to answer that right now, Dave?
Yeah, I actually wrote that down as one of my questions for follow-up already was, would Blue Cross allow us to offer maybe a Medicare Advantage on the PPO and HMO side? I asked that question several years ago and was told no. But that doesn't mean that that's not, that the answer has changed because these things change a fair amount. So, I will follow up on that question. As far as jumping back and forth, I'll confirm that answer also with Blue Cross, but I think the answer is that you can do it once a year, sort of like our regular enrollment period.
I wasn't thinking about multiple times within a year. I was thinking over a period of years, your needs as a retiree, what a person's needs as a retiree might change, and that could cause change.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Har. Mayor Potem Rhodes?
I also agree that we need to have more information to study this long-term. Excuse me. Because I think the trajectory that we're on is not sustainable. It would be nice to think that our premiums are not going to continue to increase at 15%, but they could, are more than that even. I've got a Blue Cross, Blue Shield supplemental, because I'm on Medicare, you know, it went up $120 a month, about 400%. And it's for a variety of reasons, but it's also partly because Blue Cross, Blue Shield changed their business plan, their organization, so that they could, in fact, generate more profit than what they have in the past. And there's nothing to stop them from doing that again in the future. So, I think we should keep moving on with figuring out something better to do. Then I had one question on the process. It was mentioned a couple of times that the employees had agreed or accepted a larger deductible. Does that mean that the committee that made the recommendation then went out to the staff so all the staff have had a chance to look? Okay, thank you.
Anything further from the group? Okay. Dave, Justine, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Obviously, we'll be engaging with you again in the, during your future to get some additional data and maybe reconvene a work meeting sometime in the coming months to discuss the issue of retiree healthcare benefits further. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terry is going to bring in our, I think we have one guest and then some staff from our recreation complex to discuss the rec center roof. Feel free to help yourself with any more food and drink.